And if you all want to come up here to the front, guys, right up across the front here. You can stand right out here and the flag is right back here. I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and literally indescribable.
If you stay right there, we're going to take a picture with you all and then it will go over on the wall over here where all those other pictures are. All right, our next thing on our agenda is item four, approval of the meeting minutes. And we have the June 2nd, 2:15 Board of Commissioners recess meeting, June 4th, 2:15 Board of Commissioners recess meeting, and the June 9th, 2:15 Board of Commissioners recess meeting. And from what I understand, on the minutes on June 9th, there may be something that needs to be addressed, maybe over, maybe pull it off the day's agenda and put it back on October, an October's meeting, if that's all right with the board.
Okay.
All right, and I'll look forward to a motion to, if there's no changes to the minutes, I'll look for a motion to approve those as printed.
A move.
All right, thank you, Jack. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that passes four to zero. Item five is approval of the agenda as it is printed. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
A move.
Thank you, Maynard, for the motion. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, passes four to zero. All right, we're lucky tonight to have a presentation by the county manager and David Jones from Continental Corp., the manager, and Naomi, and they're going to come forward and give us a presentation on a summary of activities at Continental Tevis. Naomi, you're not coming up?
I'm a supporter.
All right.
I think she's left me, left me solo.
All right, Alan, you're not coming up either? All right.
I was instructed to bring some props because that's always a good thing. First of all, let me, let me thank you for the opportunity to be here, and let me also just acknowledge, I attend lots of business meetings, both in Morganton and internationally, but it's always a pleasure to be in a meeting where we start with prayer, and we start with the pledge of allegiance by some, some of our young people, so that's very refreshing. Whatever else goes on, that was a great start for the meeting today.
Good, thank you.
Again, my name is David Jones, I'm the plant manager of Continental in Morganton. We're off Jamestown, Jamestown Road, and I just want to take a few minutes to reacquaint our Board of Commissioners with Continental, who we are and what it is we do. So often, we hear about the demise of manufacturing in, in our state or in our country, and I'm here to tell you tonight that manufacturing at Continental in Morganton is doing well, and want to tell you a little bit about what it is we do and how well we are doing. Again, what we've really tried to focus on, and we've been working with Alan some to make sure we get the message out, is we're not the type manufacturing that our parents or grandparents were involved with. We are state-of-the-art, making state-of-the-art products with state-of-the-art processes, and we're really, from all of our employee base, we're looking for the best and the brightest. So I'm just going to take you a few, a few pieces of information today. Again, we like to refer to it, I think the first time Alan asked me about our business, "What does you do?", and I said, "Well, I can describe it for you and there's, a lot of people will tell you something's not rocket science." But quite frankly, our product and our processes are about as close to rocket science as you can come. And for us, we work for the, our big-picture company is Continental. The Tevis isn't part of the name anymore, it's just Continental Automotive. As of 2012, we had sales of about forty billion dollars, certainly all over the world and every location, and our employees are about one hundred and seventy-seven thousand employees in almost fifty countries. If you look in the parking lot, every vehicle is going to have Continental products on it. Our company manufactures high-tech products, safety products, leading-edge technology products, more specifically at Morganton. At our two locations on Jamestown Road, we have a facility that we own where we manufacture electronic braking systems, and this is the smaller module. We will manufacture about six point two million braking systems this year at our, we call it, size-one location. This is part of the stability control for the vehicles. It became mandatory in 2012 that all light vehicles produced in North America have to have stability control. It is the, the next level from the anti-lock brakes. So anti-lock brakes wouldn't allow your brakes to lock up. Stability control has enough intelligence that it's able to sense, based on where the steering wheel angle input is, if the wheels are going in that same direction. If not, if it senses the wheels are not going in the same direction as the steering wheel because of a slip or a skid, it begins to brake the individual wheel circuits. So the NHTSA has recognized the life-saving capabilities of stability control, it's now required on all vehicles. So since 2012, it's been required. We have about a third of the domestic market, and we'll make about six point two million this year. So again, a great life-saving, safety product that we manufacture in Morganton. At our two locations, again, the other location, we manufacture electronic air suspensions, and that's what we see a sample of here, as opposed to a traditional spring or strut that we're familiar with. On some vehicles, there's a pretty elaborate setup, what we have on the air suspension. It's variable, it's adjustable, it's electronic. So we produce this product today in Morganton as well for the Jeep Grand Cherokee, the Dodge Ram Pickup, and the Tesla electric vehicle. So these are our, our three primary customers. Overall, in Morganton, we have about, in our two locations, about six hundred employees. Overall, our sales between the two are close to a billion dollars. So again, we're really, we're really proud of the revenue stream that we're able to generate from our locations in Morganton when many other manufacturers have packed up and, and gone home. Our contributions locally, in Burke County, taxes about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in 2014, another six hundred thousand city, and about one point four-three million worth of utilities. So we're, we're a significant and important part of the economy, and we're proud to be right here in Morganton. Again, some of the processes that we want to share with you, just to give you a little indication, indication of the nature of what we do. We're an assembly plant. Both of our locations are high-volume assembly. We're putting a stability control system together about every six and a half seconds. We take the components that come from our sister plant, we have one in Mexico, we have one in Virginia. We bring all the electronic and the mechanical components together, and we assemble them and test them and pack them and ship them in Morganton. Again, all of our processes are highly automated. What you'll see in a couple of these pictures, this is down one of our conveyor lines where the part being produced. It comes along, all the processing happens automatically, but there'll be vision systems, laser welding, robotics that move the components in place, and camera after camera that will take digital evidence that the processes happen correctly. We monitor all the forces and pressures that it takes to put the components together. We collect that data and keep it forever. If there's a problem with a vehicle in the field, we're going, able to go back and capture that data, look at when that part was produced, and verify that all the processes happened as it should have. Again, a few more, just photos that, that highlight the technology in our processes. Here, can we see our part on a pallet? We also see some of the work about to happen in the, the cylinders and the sensors and the actuators that are beginning the process to assemble this part. The message that we really have, and as we've shared with our, with our community college system, and as we've shared with the high schools, and as we're even sharing with the middle schools, is our processes are very technology-driven. We want to make sure that our community understands that there are great jobs and great opportunities in Burke County and in Morganton for really high-tech careers, and we're really trying to get the word out. Everything we do in our manufacturing is state-of-the-art, great opportunities for, for our young people going forward. Again, just a, a few down a long line of equipment, some of the pneumatic filters and filtration systems we have. We operate, kind of a pun, we operate in a clean room. So our manufacturing, as, as we contrast it with old, dirty manufacturing, we're in a clean room with hairnets and lab coats, and filtering all the particulates so that everything that happens is pristine in our manufacturing climate. Again, our people are best at most vital resource, and we need technically savvy people to do that. We believe we're a good community neighbor. We have a list of some of our contributions. As we continue to focus on the needy and sharing with the education system, sharing through scholarships, and I believe we have another event tomorrow where Continental is going to sponsor these science fairs in the, the school system, because we want our local community to understand the importance of, of science and engineering and how that impacts us locally. This is, this is a newspaper clipping of one of our recent audits with General Motors, just to highlight how well our plant is received and perceived by our customers. This was where we were the first to pass one of GM's most stringent audits. Since that, we've had our customers from Nissan, from Honda, from Subaru, and our scores are in the ninety-nine to a hundred range, so as commissioners of our county, you can be very proud of the foot we put forward representing Morganton and representing Burke County with the very upper echelon of automotive manufacturing. Again, we're partnering with our community college system to offer scholarships, to make sure that all of our young people understand that there are great jobs right here in Burke County. And we're hiring, we're looking for the best and the brightest, and again, we're thriving in Burke County when others have left, and others have left North Carolina. Again, I always put in a pitch for Continental. We're a German-owned company, but we have about six hundred employees in Morganton, an hour up the road, just across from the Asheville Airport. In Henderson County, we have another seven hundred employees, and we built a tire plant in South Carolina that'll ultimately employ about fifteen hundred employees. So Continental, as an automotive supplier, has really put a stake in the ground in North and South Carolina. We're proud to be here, and we're especially proud to be right here in Burke County. That's the information I had. I'd certainly field any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the commissioners, from, for David?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mr. Jones, where do you begin to look for that employee that needs to have all this computer and IT technology?
Our, our first and primary resource is, is we're scanning the community colleges. So we believe that should be our, our first place to go, is in the community college system. They're mechatronics, and we're trying to support that. We're looking to do what we can for sponsoring labs or anything else there to help grow those employees that we need. But our belief is that first and foremost, community college system's where they should be, and then we're trying to take a couple of steps back, even to the middle schools, to start planting that seed, so that, I don't believe, and we don't believe, that everybody necessarily needs a four-year degree, or it's right for everybody. But there are great jobs with two-year degrees focused on mechatronics and on technology, where we can offer really great careers for our young people.
And if you qualify, you have some training programs in-house?
We have internal apprentice programs as well, where we continue to nurture and foster that. So we even have some now where they're coupled up with school and work, so they're going to school and we're working at the same time. But we would like to see that really strengthen, strengthen those bonds, because us and other employees, employers will ultimately, what will determine the winners and losers are access to that technology and those technicians that can take care of our processes and our equipment.
Well, if I was twenty years younger, I'd apply, how's that?
Ah, sure. But I just want you to know, we don't, we don't only need young people, we need them all, so.
Ryan, as chairman of BDI, our economic development arm and the county, do you have any comments on what's going on out there?
Yes, sir. They're wonderful, we're glad you're here, we want you to stay, grow, and expand. And to that end, back earlier last fall, there was an opportunity with Golden Leaf for a grant for, it was a competitive grant, and as you remember, I emailed and contacted Dr. Helmick and Mr. Putnam to come up with a project that could be submitted, and they in turn did submit, and I asked them to submit a project that would help us to become a hub of people with exceptional science, mathematics, and critical thinking skills, and they entered the mechatronics expansion program. It was a very competitive program. They asked for one point three million dollars, I believe, to do an expansion, and it was fierce competition with about twenty-two other counties in the state, and they were able to win a, a grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that, and they are working as hard as they possibly can to do that. And also, I think the integration between the community college and the high school system to help advance this and get people to realize what a wonderful opportunity. There are about thirty-some jobs needing mechatronics background here that are open in Burke County now. And I think when we went down to visit Cy-, not Cypress, but Siemens, the guy from Siemens said, "If you had a mechatronics degree and they found you acceptable to employ", they started at seventy-five thousand a year. If you're twenty years old and have done the joint high school diploma mechatronics degree, and you're coming out with, with very little, if any debt, and you're getting a job that pays anywhere near that, that's fantastic. I mean, you start thinking BMW is my own house, vacations, and there's not too many twenty-year-olds that can, can think like that. And it's important that people know about your company and what the working conditions are like, same as with Ekronis, as furniture. It's not what the, the plants were in the nineteen-fifties and sixties. This is unbelievably interesting work and rewarding work, and without these people in our community, we'd be in a bad, bad way. And we do appreciate your being here, and BDI is glad to do whatever it can to help you to facilitate an expansion or to, to find, find employees.
Thank you again. We, we're committed that this is where we want to be, and this is where we want to thrive and help our community thrive. So it's, it's that doing it together that we want to encourage.
Good, thank you so much, David. Is there any other questions by the Board of Commissioners, or, David, we just thank you for your dedication to Burke County, and six hundred people are, I bet you are happy in Burke County that you're here.
We're happy to be here. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and Alan and Naomi, thank you for coming tonight, too. All right, that takes us down to our one scheduled public hearing tonight, and our public hearing is general services, a CDBG grant for, application for Roney Road and Highway eighteen south, and Chris Hollefield is our general services director is presenting.
Well, I'll say one extra thing about Leah Martin from the COG. That's right. Before we do the, I'll let Leah do the, the public hearing, I just want to remind the board what the extents of this project are. This project is the grant-funded project that would run water between the two end of line, that we have, end-of-line situations we have on Highway eighteen south. Basically, I'll use the landmarks of Shoup's Way headed south, it would run from Shoup's Way down just past River Road. That's the two landmarks along Highway eighteen, and a small portion from Highway, off Highway eighteen on Roney Road that would pick up where the convenience site is and run out to Parker Industries, about the intersection where the George, George Hildebrand Fire Department, volunteer fire department is. We may do some things outside that scope, outside the grant scope, that's a two-million-dollar grant, but that won't be part of what we talk about tonight, that won't be part of the, of the grant funding, and so we'll save that for a later date. But for the grant purposes and the purposes of the, of the public hearing, it'd be that portion along eighteen I just described, and then a small portion on Roney Road.
All right, Leah.
So unfortunately, due to the requirements of the grant, and according to the clerk, I'm going to have to read these minutes, and so I will do it as quickly as possible. This is a public hearing of the Burke County Board of Commissioners on September the fifteenth to provide explanation and description of the funding available for this coming year and the upcoming grant ground to the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources Community Development Block Grant Program Infrastructure Grant. And as we, Chris Hollefield is here with us, and Leah, I am Leah Martin with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and I've been working on developing the grant. The public hearing is to obtain citizens' views, respond to funding proposals, and answer any questions posed. The meeting must cover the county's community development needs, development of the proposed activities, a review of the program compliance before the submission of the county's funding application to the state of North Carolina. The purpose of the Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Funding is to provide for equality of life for low- to moderate-income people by providing a safe, clean environment and clean drinking water through water and sewer infrastructure improvements and extensions of service. It must benefit an area where at least fifty-one percent of the beneficiaries are low to moderate income, as defined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that is the funding entity that's, originally it's HUD, as we most often know it. We may perform eligible activities, which in this case is water and sewer, to minimize displacement and provide displacement assistance as necessary. In a typical year, North Carolina receives forty-four million dollars, with twenty-six million to the infrastructure program. For this coming year, they had an earlier round in March, which we would not have been a good applicant for. The second round, they changed the regs, actually, we, we had our first train, we had our training on it in August, so this is a quick turnaround, but we feel like it's a more competitive project and was worth the efforts and to go speak with the public. This is a thirteen million dollar for this particular round, and it will be a competitive process, I will say. For next year, there's a similar distribution expected, and, and right now, they're only considering doing one round in September, but that would provide twenty-six million so that perhaps maybe some of those lower-scoring projects would, could get funded. The maximum available grant is two million dollars over a three-year period, and applications for the remaining FYI funds must be submitted by the end of this month, by September the thirtieth. The CDBG program in general to North Carolina is available to fund a wide variety of community development activities. The state of North Carolina has chosen to fund two activities, water and sewer infrastructure and economic development projects that lead to job creation or retention, and that can be for demolitions of buildings to provide new space for a new industry, it also can be for a building reuse project or for infrastructure including water, sewer, streets, rail to an industry that would create or retain jobs. This program, the CDBG infrastructure program, funds water and sewer activities, including projects that resolve water loss in distribution systems, that regionalize two or more water systems, that rehabilitate or replace a water treatment plant, and in this case, water that would extend water to, sorry, extend public water to areas with contaminated wells or dry wells, or the, one that's lacked yield. They also can provide assistance to areas that have failed septic systems on the wastewater side, or the wastewater treatment plant to allow for greater compliance with regulations, or to rehab, to rehabilitate a wastewater system so that they had overflows into the system, or that, that didn't work appropriately. The proposed Burke County CDBG Highway eighteen south and Roney Road project is a grant application for two million and funds to address critically needed public water extensions for deficiencies in private wells with critical and acute public water needs. The proposed project is eleven thousand two hundred and thirty linear feet of public water on NC eighteen south connecting the dead-in lines currently on NC eighteen south between forty-eight twenty-four NC eighteen south and John AB Street intersection, and then a thirteen thousand linear feet of water on Roney Road to old NC eighteen south. The proposed activities and estimated budget are water improvements, one point eight million, and then the grant administration, which includes the environmental, whatever easements, is two hundred thousand. A total of a hundred thousand of the CDBG infrastructure funding will be used to benefit low-to-moderate-income people. income people. The project area has been determined by a door-to-door survey to have a 76.3% low to moderate income. And we have been out on Saturdays and late in the evenings, and we still have a couple of houses. So that 76.3% could go up just a little bit, which is helpful actually for the grant. It is, this project is identified in your capital improvement plan as proposed. And the range of activities covered by this project is water construction, environmental review, engineering design, construction administration and observation, legal activities, surveying, and grant administration. If the Burke County is awarded this grant, the county is required to adhere to federal procurement requirements and other federal regulations, which include the following: the American and Disabilities Act, Section 504 survey, Davis Bacon and Related Labor Acts, adoption and submittal of the following plans: the Citizen Participation Plan, an Equal Opportunity Plan, a Fair Housing Plan, a Language Access Plan, a Relocation Assistance Plan, a Section 3 Plan, and excessive force provision. You actually, in your case, would just be updating those plans because you already have existing CDBG application open right now. The state of North Carolina requires that if the county of Burke receives this funding, that the county will certify that will comply with the requirements of the general displacement and relocation policy for CDBG granting, funding. And in this case, it's, this project will have no displacement and a relocation will occur due to it. In the past, Burke County has applied for and received the following completed CDBG projects. Sorry about this. Goodness, it's a long list. So currently, you have an open Anna Street Water and Sewer Project, which is under construction. It's $330,000, $350,000. The Fitzgerald Nursery SBA was 10 jobs created, and that was $250,000. You had a scattered site, 16 housing units were rehabilitated with $400,000. You had a, hmm, that must have been a Community Development Block Grant rehabilitation. Eight housing units were addressed worth $100,000, probably an urgent repair, excuse me. And a Taylor Avenue Water Project, $23,713 linear feet with 76 households with $750,000. And that actually did a major portion of what's already on Roney Road also. A utility hookup grant with 21 households for $100,000. A $400,000 scattered site grant in 2008 that did eight housing units. A 2006 Burke County Line Road Water Project that did 11,000 linear feet for 50 households, and that was $437,000. A utility hookup grant, which was 30 households for $75,000 in 2004. In 2001, a $766,250 Music Mountain Water Project. And in 2001, a $400,000 scattered site, eight households were rehabilitated, and probably many more urgent repairs on those, too. And in 2001, a $75,000 water tap grant, which would have done tap connections for 25 households. And those have all been administered and found to be in compliance with the program throughout all those years. If the county wishes to apply, the application must be submitted by September 30th. And if additional information is needed, you should contact the Director of General Services County Engineer, Chris Hollefield, at 828-764-9062. Formal written complaints or comments concerning the application process that should be submitted to Burke County, and they will be responded to within 10 working days by Brian Steen, County Manager, PO Box 219, Morganton, North Carolina, or 200 Avery Avenue. The phone is 828-764-9350. A project application will be available for public review after September 16th at the Burke County General Services at 110 North Green Street, Suite A. That's it.
That is pretty lengthy, Leah.
Sorry.
Because the abstract is so lengthy, does anybody have any questions before we go into the public hearing? I know that was lengthy, and I don't want anybody to lose their thoughts or whatever if there's any questions for Leah on this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, the 17% that you alluded to, that would be the county's match if we got the grant?
Oh, I probably misspoke on something. But it's, I just slurred my speech, excuse me. What it is, is you have no match on this project. And that's interesting that their format doesn't even ask about that or speak about that. We normally would. But there is no match required. My slurred speech was 76.3% of the household, the income of the areas were low to moderate, would qualify for the grant. And the grant would pay for those households that do qualify. They would pay for that tap and connection as part of that, if awarded.
Any other questions for Leah? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is now opened. Does anybody have any comments on this project? There being none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The resolution is very lengthy. If you all look in your packet, and basically what it is, is a resolution authorizing funding application to the North Carolina Dean or Division of Water Infrastructure, CDBJ, One Highway 18 South and Roney Road Project. I would think that we don't have to read through that, our legal, it's a long, lengthy whereas and whereas and whereas. Can we just go ahead and approve the resolution as I said? All right, I'll be happy to receive a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution that you just identified, sir.
Good, thank you. Any comments from the Commissioners or questions? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The pose like sign passes four to zero. Thank you, Leah and Chris.
I didn't say this, and I don't necessarily want to change the minutes because it would be, but this is some of the water that we got out of taps. And it's just due to that, according to your Nathan Hall and your, the northern part, you have ironed water. It's a different kind of iron, and it doesn't mix with the water as much as it does in the southern area. And that's one reason why we've been able to hit some new projects. So it doesn't matter how far they drill down. It's due to the nature of that.
Good, thank you all. Any other comments, Chris? All right, thank you. All right, our next.
Did we close the public hearing?
No, I'm sorry, let's close the public hearing. We may already had the motion, but we go ahead and close the public hearing, so that's All right, our number eight is informal public comments.
I think if you look, number two on that item is the CIP.
Under public hearing, you got two.
I must have a different copy. I must have, I'm sorry, I got a different copy of that. Thought I had the most up-to-date copy. All right, item two is General Services Water and Sewer Grant Capital Improvement Plan. Again, Chris, please.
Thank you. This is no different than the plan I presented to you at the pre-agenda meeting. It is a requirement of the grant process, just like the public hearing. The only addition I have made to the plan since last meeting was to actually add this project. Leah said I needed to add it as a proposed state. I didn't put proposed because I'm confident we're going to win the grant. So as a move of, a bold move, I left it in there as a normal project. It shows up under FY 17, which is $2 million there in the first year. Other than that, it remains unchanged. It did require a 10-year CIP. Of course, once you get out past two or three years, it's sort of a guesswork to get to that year, 2027.
All right, any questions for Chris on that? We really, on the notes that we have, that was coming under consent agenda, so I guess that's moved up to.
Yes, I did present that under consent agenda in the pre-agenda, that's right.
All right.
She moved it for the.
We need a public hearing on that, too, Chris?
Not at all, just a.
All right.
I thought it just was to inform them that we had a CIP. That's why it was in consent agenda, just because it was a non-routine or non-controversial, just to show that we had created one per the grant application requirements and that they had seen it.
I think on our first agenda that went out, it was under consent.
Correct.
And. And I don't think we really have any action on that in our packet either.
Right, that's correct. Yep.
Pardon me, we were supposed to pass the resolution.
It's item 9.10.
It's in the consent agenda.
It's under the consent agenda. So I guess we'll just leave it there under consent as we go into consent, Chris.
Okay.
Good, thank you. All right, our next item is item eight, informal public comments. Beth, do we have anybody that wishes to address the commission tonight? Nobody at all? All right. That'll take us down to consent agenda, and we have 16 items under consent. And the first one is proclamation declaring September 215 is Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. And again, everybody in their packet should have the resolution, a proclamation. And I don't think it's pretty lengthy. Again, it's a lot of whereas and whereas, but again, it's under consent. And I think we'll leave it there and like it is. So under items two to nine, or I'm sorry, two to six, it's all the clerk. Beth, I'll turn that over to you.
Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you and the board, I'll go ahead and read through the consent agenda and take care of that. Beth, it's a little bit new for her. Clerk reappointment to Burke County Smart Start Partnership for Children. Number three, clerk reappointments to the Child Protection, Child Fatality Prevention Team. Item four, clerk reappointment of Ann Dietz to the Veteran Services Board. Item five, clerk reappointment to jury commission. Item six, removal of members from Parks and Recreation Commission. Item seven, county manager, BDI request to use FHEC to store equipment. Item eight, county manager, FHEC increase in damage deposit fee. Item nine, county manager, USDA lease for farm loan team. Item 10, General Services Water and Sewer Grant Capital Improvement Plan. Item 11, Fire Marshal, delegate the Annual Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Directors' report to the local fire chiefs. Item 12, HR Article 6 Employee Benefits Policy Edition. Item 13, JCPC Appointment and Removal to JCPC. Item 14, Tax Department EMS Collections Report for July 2015. Item 15, Tax Department Release Refund Report for August 2015. And item 16, Tax Department Tax Collections Report for August 2015.
Good, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian on any of those, one to 16? If there is none, an item, motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve all 16 of them as Brian delivered.
Good, thank you, Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hands. The pass is four to zero, Beth. All right, this is strange tonight. We don't have one item for decision, which is unusual. But item 11 is reports and comments on the tourism authority. And Ed, you're going to give us an update on what's going on in tourism in Burke County. Thank you.
Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk about Burke County's tourism economy. It is an economy in our community and exciting news to share with everyone tonight. Back in August, the North Carolina Department of Commerce reported that Burke County took in $91.34 million in 2014 from visitors, AKA, also known as tourists. Also, the Burke County Visitor Center located inside the Chamber of Commerce has seen record numbers of visitors walk through the doors this summer with increases of 40% and 45% in June and July. August was also up significantly with nearly 600 visitors through the visitor center in August. So we've had a tremendous increase in tourism. Also, it's interesting that sometime in the next two weeks, a visitor will walk into our visitor center, and that person in September will surpass the entire number of visitors we had in 2014. So by the end of the third quarter of this year, we will surpass all the numbers we had for the entire year last year. We also have, according to the Department of Commerce, more than 680 people directly employed in the tourism industry in Burke County, and the total payroll was over $13 million. State tax revenue generated here was $4.87 million through state sales tax and excise taxes, and also taxes on personal and corporate income. Approximately $2.54 million in local taxes were generated from sales and property tax revenue from travel generated and travel-supported businesses. In 2013, Burke County was number one in the entire state as far as the increase in visitor spending percentage. In 2014, we were 23rd in the entire state for visitor spending, and we were 7th in the western North Carolina region. I'll also go to our Burke County Monthly Tourism Report for August, where it shows that we had 495 visitors and a year-to-date total of 2,449. And we still see a lot of folks looking to relocate to our region, mainly from New England states and the upper Midwest. They're tired of the cold winters and the snow, and they're also looking for a place to retire that has a quality of life, excellent healthcare. And a lot of these retirees are also not looking to get out of the business industry or get away from work, but they want to move here because of the social aspect of our area and also stay active in the community. And we see that a lot. Also, in August, Lake James State Park had 61,476 visitors, and South Mountain State Park had 27,567. So we had a very good August, and September is shaping up to be great as well. Back in June, we hosted travel writers, and we do this every year, sometimes once a year, sometimes twice a year. This year, we held a media tour, and we invited travel journalists. And this group included the travel editor with the Atlanta Journal. We also had a field publisher and producer with CNN and NBC out of Atlanta. And we also had a writer from WNC Magazine who produced a story that came out this month in the October, September, October issue. And we're actually, I go through this magazine every month to look what Burke County is covered in here. And we're actually on the cover. It's hard to find, but it says up here in the top right of the WNC Magazine, "New Foraged Beers." And if you go into the article, that's specifically talking about Fonta Flora Brewery here in Morganton in Burke County. We also have inside the magazine a WNC fact, and that is the nylon used to make the U.S. flag that was placed on the moon by the Apollo 11 astronauts in 1969 was woven at Burlington Mills in the Catawba County town of Rodeus. And I think Rodeus is in Burke County, am I right? So there is a mistake in here, but I noticed going through here that that was in Burke County. We also have an article in here on the Vance Patterson that put together the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights that are on display at Courthouse Square in Morganton. And we also had a full page on, called "The Road Trip," and it's looking at Burke County and our great outdoors. And it talked about hiking the Linville Gorge, Lake James Water Sports, camping, and our Beanstalk Zip Line, among others. And it featured places to eat and drink and stay in Burke County. And then finally, it had, as I mentioned before, talking about Fonta Flora. And the latest brewing trend brings foraged ingredients to hyper-local beers. And that is, they use wild things that they can find and other farm-grown. And they have had a dandelion beer saison that they released from, made from local dandelions. So quite interesting that when I look at magazines, especially WNC Magazine and So quite interesting that when I look at magazines, especially WNC Magazine, and Burke County is significantly represented in here. I can tell you, going into the fall, we had a fun, updated daily campaign that will soon end. We reached over 300,000 people on Facebook with that, and it drove our website traffic up over 70% from last year for folks that were looking for interesting and fun things to do in Burke County. Beginning October, we will resurrect our fall color reports updated daily with a billboard on I-40 and a media campaign that will reach out to newspapers, radio, and television stations across the southeast showcasing the fall colors that we have in Burke County. I was up on top of Table Rock on Sunday and took a photo of a maple tree that is already in full fall color. So it's starting early, and we hope it'll last a long time. Finally, I wanted to mention that the Ridgeline Trolley is up and running. We ran a total of 24 hours over Friday and Saturday this past week as a shuttle service for the Historic Morganton Festival. The Historic Morganton Festival paid us an hourly rate to do that. The trolley never operates for free, where there's always somebody, either the passengers or a sponsored organization, that will pay for that. And our revenue for the trolley in the first three months that we've owned the trolley is up over 300% what I projected and still growing. We have over 20 events scheduled between now and the middle of December, and more events are coming up every day. In fact, folks that rode the trolley during the festival have been calling me this week, wanting to charter it for Christmas parties and transportation for other events through the end of the year. We're also using the trolley for a wedding in Hickory in November, a wedding here in Burke County in Morganton and part of the county as well, coming up in a couple of weeks. And so it's being well-received, and it's a fun addition to our tourism product here in Burke County. And that's my report.
Any questions for Ed on his report? The trolley thing is fascinating, Ed. I think that's going to be a win-win situation. Great.
We've already had folks that have wanted to rent the trolley when it was, it's already booked for something else, and somebody said, "Well, maybe you need to get another one."
Any comments or questions for Ed?
It's an excellent report, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I need a vote to accept Ed's report. I'd be happy to accept a motion to do that.
Oh.
Thank you, Jack. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That passes four to zero. Again, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, item two, under Reports and Comments, County Attorney Matthews Construction, JR.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county has just settled, subject to board approval, a lawsuit with its general contractor in the 911 Center project. The general contractor was Matthews Construction Company. They received a $3.35 million contract from the county for the building of that building. The county had several problems with the contractor related to delays in the project. And when the contractor presented their final bill of approximately $94,000 to the county in November of 2014, the county notified them that we intended to avail ourselves of a $500 a day penalty clause contained in the contract based on the number of days that the project was late due to contractor delays. We claimed 64 days at $500 a day or a $32,000 offset. Matthews did not agree with that, and the party has been unable to agree. Matthews filed suit in late January of this year. Under our Superior Court rules, we had a mediation. Matthews was asking approximately $100,000, and the county demanded its offsets. And we were able to come to an agreement that instead of paying Matthews the sum of approximately $100,000, we would pay them the sum of $62,986, which reflects our offset of our penalty and a few other items that we were mediating. The parties agreed to this and signed a memorandum of the mediated settlement on September 2nd. The mediated settlement is subject to the approval by the Board of Commissioners in open session. So I now submit that to the board and ask that the board vote to approve this mediated settlement.
Any questions from the commissioners on the settlement?
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification, JR. This still puts us under the total cost projected for that bill to accomplish. We don't owe anything out of general funds, it'll come from that grant for the 911.
Right, all the funds we're talking about here are the 911 grant funds.
Good.
Any other questions? All right, I need a motion to ratify the settlement.
Chairman, I make the motion to ratify the memorandum of mediated settlement, 15 CVS 91 between Burke County and Matthews Construction Company Incorporated dated September 2nd, 2015.
Good, thank you, Maynard. Again, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, that passes four to zero. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and open the floor for comments from the commissioners or attorney or county manager. We'll start with JR.
No comments from me tonight, sir.
Fine.
No comments, sir.
No comments from me. Maynard?
Mr. Chairman, I had one, and I wanted to ask the counselor before the meeting, and I failed to do that. So counselor, if I'm out of order, call me out of order. I promised Mr. Kissler, who is the head of the North Carolina Abbotist Association, that we would announce if allowable that they're having a Bible Rally Day in Raleigh Friday. I wouldn't be going, but we have a 3 o'clock appointment, a meeting. But they were hoping for a good turnout, and that's just information. If you want more information, just go on the website of North Carolina Baptist Association.
Okay, thank you, Maynard. Jeff?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Yes.
All right. And I'll remind all the board members of a special meeting on Friday in this building, I think, Brian, 3 p.m. And Beth, if you want to read the vacancy announcements for the county, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Vice Chairman, we have the following opportunities to serve on county board and committee. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment, City of Morganton Planning Board, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Mission, and the Burke County Board of Adjustment.
Good, thank you, Beth. All right, and there's no action on that? We don't have any need tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, Mr. Iams reminded me, we have a contract with our, with our senior mills provider, and that contract began July 1st of this year. And the contractor is working under the contract but has not provided us with a bond yet. And since the board had approved that contract at an earlier time, I just wanted to make the board aware of that and that we're probably going to have to start a 10-day notice period to them to either provide the bond within 10 days or their contract would be terminated.
All right, thank you. Any questions for JR on that? But that's something we already voted on earlier. All right, there's no need tonight for closed session, but we do have cake for JR's birthday in our chambers, and happy to have a motion to adjourn.
Can we report we adjourned? Give Beth a round of applause for...
All right. Thank you, Beth.
It didn't hurt, did it?
And a motion to adjourn.
Some of...
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and let's go to our chambers.